Description along the bottom.
Rapid communications.
An email from Robin Welly regarding clarifying our statement.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed. Reports of municipal officers and municipal departments.
Board of zoning appeals minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Questions or comments? Ms. Frishy?
Um, I just wanted to comment, I guess it goes hand in hand with West Park's, um, letter follow-up. In the BCA, there was a problem on Blaine that is quite a large structure outside of the norm. Um, and it's on Blaine and Aleria. And I think if Water and Sewer, whatever committee is going to be addressing West Park's concern for twenty-four, then maybe BCA should be aware of that when they're, um, giving fair uses.
Other questions or comments? Menace be filed.
Letter, oh wait. Letter from City Engineer Cal regarding twenty twenty-three annual sewer and manhole lining. Project number three five six, three three six, zero zero.
Mr. Wolfser.
Jeremy, did we see any bids from any local contractors or Ohio-based companies?
Mr. Cal.
Um, I think there was one Ohio, um, but normally we, in the past, we really haven't gotten any Ohio. Um, we've gotten one out of Wisconsin, one out of Michigan, and Pennsylvania is the second time we've actually worked with them. But it's kind of a niche, um, um, kind of program type thing.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Letter be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Cal regarding Anne Greenway Trail Phase Three, PID one one seven zero nine, project number three one nine, three one nine, zero zero. Additional design services and right-of-way acquisition.
Questions or comments? Ms. Frishy?
Jeremy, just for clarification, I mean, we know we were on the park side, we were working city and county-wide as far as the two thirty-six coming into town. But two thirty-six to township two forty-one, that's not in the city limits, right?
Correct.
And then, so do we have to have any agreements with the township? We work with the county on anything, or is it just because we started the original bike path?
This, this, so this is going to be within state right-of-way. Um, but we still get the plans over, once we kind of get a good set of, uh, where we're at, we give those, talk with the county, talk with the townships on it. But since we're in the state right-of-way, really the jurisdiction is we gotta get their approval to go through this, and this is a state fund, ODOT-funded project.
So we don't need a county approval of any time?
No.
And, and, Jeremy, for, um, so folks can understand what this project is doing, can you kind of give a little review of connecting from where to where?
Yeah, so this is phase three of the Greenway Trail, so phase two was just finished, or ninety percent finished, still have a couple of things. Uh, but this will be, um, from two thirty on five sixty, from two thirty-six to two forty-one, which is two forty-one is the covered bridge, um, east of town. This will get us out to the reservoir, so this will kind of complete the Greenway Trail within that. Um, this was an identified, uh, multi-use path as part of the City of Finley, Anna Hancock, uh, Park District, uh, master plan that was put together, I believe, in fourteen. Um, so this is kind of all working together with that. But this is the final phase of this, this should be on the north, uh, side of the roadway as much as possible. Um, and then we will, of course, have to make the jump to the south side. But, um, that was one of our major concerns with Strand, who is our consultant on this, is how do we get people across safely because of how much traffic is within there? So that's one of the, uh, the major design things, why we're needing a little additional right-of-way to make sure we have plenty of turning space for people to kind of set up and make that crossing. Uh, but this is the final phase of that Greenway Trail. We had one, phase one in twenty, um, this past one twenty-three, and this one will probably be in twenty-six.
Mr. Wolfser.
Jeremy, where's that going to cross over five sixty-eight? Do you know?
At, at two forty-one.
At two forty-one?
Yeah, yeah. So we, we are trying to put it at a roadway crossing, so you kind of, as a driver, you would think that's where it crosses instead of putting it as a mid-block crossing type thing.
Yeah, especially out there.
Yeah, yep.
Block at fifty miles an hour. So, no, I've seen a lot of people out there already on, I guess they want to go over the bridge again, so I don't know. There's been a lot of people on that road, on, on that, uh, multi-use path.
Correct.
Mr. Holman.
If I remember correctly, while you're on that subject, I don't think there's a traffic light out there at two forty-one, is that correct?
No, there's not.
Will there be?
Uh, probably not a traffic light, but there will be some kind of pedestrian crossing. Um, depending on the type of tra- or how much traffic's going through there, the speed and all that kind of stuff, it could, um, call it like the rapid flashing beacon or something like that. But it'll be have to some that will have to follow within ODOT's guidelines of that as well.
While you're on that subject, would it make sense to cross there at two thirty-six, since there's a traffic light there now?
Uh, we looked at that, looked, going that way, uh, but we're crossing so many houses with that, and then also a fire station, which is the township house there. Um, most of the right-of-way that, where we wouldn't have to do a lot of acquisition or any kind of temporary easements or anything like that, the cleanest side is the north side. So we were trying, we looked at that route, but, um, in the long run, it's going to be better to keep it on the north side as much as possible.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Letter be filed.
A letter from City of Finley Police Department Sergeant Walters regarding bond bond camera overview.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
A letter from Mayor Mern regarding appointment to the local Board of Tax Review. This appointment does not require council confirmation.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
A letter from Mayor Mern regarding Hancock County Combined General Health District appointment. This does require council's confirmation.
Mr. Holman, make a motion that we confirm Ms. Frishy's appointment to the Hancock County Combined General Health District Board.
Second, Mr. Holman, questions or comments? All in favor of, uh, confirming the mayor's, uh, selection to the, uh, General Health District Board? Please say aye.
Aye.
And physical sign saying that, that is, the selection is confirmed.
An email from Councilwoman Frishy regarding a request for legislation for January twenty twenty-four council meeting.
Questions or comments? Ms. Frishy?
So this letter was, uh, the seventh requesting legislation from Jim Niemeyer and myself regarding, um, the fifty percent water rate increase, to not implement that until we had, um, passed legislation and determined the proper body, um, or person to be, um, making those decisions for the City of Finley inside the city limits. As noted last year, um, we have passed legislation outside the city limits, giving the authority to the Safety Service Director, but not inside. The mayor did recognize that legislation has not been passed, and Councilman Wolfser also acknowledged it, but said he did not want to discuss it until next year. Um, so all process was followed to request legislation. However, the law director did not submit that, and I'm going to request that that be on the next council meeting and making sure it's retroactive to the January first.
Other questions or comments? Letter be filed.
Mr.?
Sorry.
I never saw a confirmation from Councilman Niemeyer that he approved of this also. Can you give us your verbal?
Yes, I approve of that. Just trying to stick up for the constituents that voted for us to be on city council.
Mayor Mern.
I would just draw your attention to the document in front of you tonight. We'll make sure it's included in the packet, but wanted to, um, give it to you all in due time. So as was previously circulated, when Councilwoman Frishy brought up this question, um, the law, Assistant Law Director's office had provided a document with the legal opinion stating that under Ohio Revised Code, because the authority has not been designated to a different body, that the Public Service Director, Service Safety Director does have that authority. We did have them expand upon that, um, providing, again, an opinion from the legal standpoint that the Service Safety Director does have the full authority to make water rate increases. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that point. Um, and note here that as was discussed at the Water and Sewer Committee, as well as at the council meetings, that it is the full intent of the administration and the Water and Sewer Committee to discuss move-forward process on evaluation, documentation, those types of items. I also would note that it's been stated a couple of times that a, you know, a data hasn't been provided to justify the increase. Um, I would, uh, point your attention that were provided at the Water and Sewer Committee that clearly outlined the projection of the expenses, the need to continue to invest in the plant, and how the revenues are not sufficient to do that. So just wanted to continue to point out those resources.
Mr. Wolfser.
Regarding Councilwoman Frishy's request that this be retroactive to this meeting, I would ask, I guess, Holly, you sent this email out, this is dated, uh, let's see, December twenty-seventh. Um, Jim, did you send an email out seconding this email after sometime after the twenty-seventh?
No, I didn't.
So your first second was actually tonight?
No, but on the record it is.
Okay, so on the record, we file, following council's process, uh, we have a, a motion and a second for legislation. So I would say that this, uh, legislation would be, uh, starting then on the next meeting of council.
Ms. Frishy.
So, first of all, I don't know why we're getting into a bunch of back and forth here. I think Councilman Niemeyer said it very well. The reason he supported me in his name is at the bottom of that email, and he was included in that email that went to Dawn on the twenty-seventh, that was within the requirements of council's rules. And anytime that two members of council request legislation, then it is usually put on the agenda. Now, um, the reason that this legislation was asked for is to be a voice for the people on, in the City of Finley limits. And the mayor is, um, making this discussion, um, choosing her way of, of describing it. Now, we have passed legislation for the Safety Service Director outside the city limits. We have not inside the limits. And if we want to get back and forth on who has the authority or who does not, uh, my, I read it differently, some citizens read it differently. Now, we have an opinion that has been elaborated on, and we were, we managed to get that added to council, but not to the packet, um, but not the legislation that was requested that followed process. So we can, if we would have had meaningful discussion with the Law Director's Office to make sure that we had, um, the right verbiage that they are requesting, so we're not getting hung up on an interpretation of, um, the legal opinion. Because what it comes back to is we are just trying to make sure we are doing what's in the best interest of the citizens of Finley inside the city limits, which also includes outside. Nobody is saying that we shouldn't raise water rates at some percentage. And yes, you provided some information, but there was a lot more information that should have been getting vetted in that process, in my opinion. Um, and I think it's in the best interest of the citizens, because once you raise rates fifty percent, we don't take it back later. So, you know, Councilman Wolfser acknowledged that at the, at the last council meeting. Um, the mayor acknowledged it in an email that we do not have legislation giving the authority to the Safety Service Director. So whatever needs to be done to get this moving forward should be happening instead of getting into a back and forth of a debate with a letter thrown on council's desk today. So I would just simply ask that Councilman Niemeyer asked, seconded the legislation, and if you want to get into a nitpicking that he didn't send his own email, that's just plain out silly. So let's move forward, get the legislation. If we need to sit down, Jim Niemeyer and myself with the Law Director to make sure we have the proper verbiage, so we're not calling anybody a liar or anything else, but we're doing what's in the best interest of the citizens. And it's unfortunate, Mayor, that you want to nitpick and just keep moving forward fifty percent.
Mayor Mern.
Yeah, I was just going to add, um, Councilwoman, I'm perfectly fine with your legislation moving forward, but we're not going to be able to retroactively go back, as is stated in the legal opinion, as was vetted through the committees, as this team at the administration has been working on for two years, evaluating all of our different options and how we could save money and how we could make this work. It stinks, as I've stated multiple times, no one wants to have to do this. But we have the responsibility to be the adults in the room to make sure that we're in a position that's financially sustainable. So I agree, I'm tired of the back and forth, but I'm happy to provide you any additional information and sit down as we have, as people have asked questions to help folks understand. Um, and we can, you know, the legislation can be put on, that's fine and dandy. I think the important part was to, again, clarify that we have this authority, that we have implemented it, that notification has gone out, and that we can't now go back and, and change it. If council wants to then go through and then pass legislation to change it in the future, that's fine, and figure that out, but we can't retroactively go back and change that.
Mr. Finer.
What's it mean if it's on? Testing. Good. Uh, this is something I've been working on, Rob Feitner, Assistant City Law Director. I did, it came my attention, there were some translation issues. I'll let council review that on their own. The, the ordinance requested, and I guess I can have discussions with the Law Director on this, is requesting legislation to include city council, recognize that ORC seven forty-three oh four does not specifically give authority to someone to deal with, uh, water rates. It in fact does, and right now that's your public, uh, service director. What the law allows is a community, if a village or city that has a water utility could create a board, could create another person to do that. But right now, as a default, Ohio Vice Code gives that power to the public, uh, service director. It'd be my opinion that if, if council wanted to have, entertain a motion to, uh, form a committee to decide if the City of Finley wants a committee to address water rates, that would seem to make sense. But I don't believe it is appropriate, uh, for the Law Director's Office to draft an ordinance saying that seven forty-three oh four does not state authority, when in fact I believe it does strongly. So that's just, that's my position, that's something that we can look. Draft an ordinance saying that it, uh, that I believe that it actually does. City can change that by ordinance anytime it wants, by naming a committee, naming a whole different person to do it. But right now, the default is the public, uh, service director.
Mr. Wolfser.
Rob, so your interpretation is that council could indeed put together a separate body of some sort, whatever form that might take, that would have, uh, the ability to, uh, change water rates? Is that correct?
Correct, and that was the kind of the, it's a different fact pattern in the case law that I attached to that, but that's what it says, that it's not inclusive, exclusive, or anything. Right now, that's just the default. So if you had, if you had a pub, if you were back in the old days where we had a public safety director and a public service director, right now the safety director wouldn't have a dog in the race. It'd just be the public service director addressing water rates. But you can change that any way that you want, and that case law, uh, supports that, which is.
So the case law supports that, and we don't have to be, essentially saying you don't have to be a charter city to be able to do that.
Right, don't get confused. That statute is saying that if, if you are uncharted, then it's your public service director. If you are chartered, then that charter's going to have to appoint a person or a body to do so.
Thank you.
Ms. Frishy.
So, Rob, I appreciate you standing up here and reiterating this letter that was put on our desk this evening. Um, and I guess where I think we need clarification is, at the last council meeting, I brought this discussion up. I said I was bringing legislation, I submitted legislation. I asked for communication from the Law Director's Office, because if we are misstating using ORC as part of the reasoning, then we need to change that. And for the mayor to say that we can't fix something, I find that very hard to believe, because there's always opportunities to rescind things or change things. We learned that when we had the eight thirty East Sandusky Street several years ago. So maybe we need to eliminate the discussion of the ORC that I and Mr. Niemeyer have focused on, and maybe we need to retroactive the decision that was made by the Safety Service Director, who does not have the authority under ordinance with the State of Finley, and form that committee and wait until we have the proper information, we determine the proper policy, the proper procedure, to make sure we're doing what is best for the citizens of the Finley inside and outside the city limits. So, you, you know, I feel like I'm on the, on the defense mode when I simply asked to do what was best for our community, and, and the mayor seems to be on her own path. And it sounds like we're trying to nip, we're trying to focus on the ORC code. And if I was wronged on, on using the ORC code for the legislation, then I apologize. But I think, again, what Jim and I are asking for is to make sure we are rescinding and retroactivating everything back until we can fix this process and do what is right. So maybe we should have sat down, and maybe that's what needs to happen, and do a retroactive policy. So can we do that, Rob, or can we do that, Dawn?
I don't know about the retroactivity, but right now you've got, uh, a law that says your public service director is the water rate guy.
You have an ORC code, we don't have a City of Finley ordinance, can we acknowledge that?
I would imagine that that's true, so the next thing you folks might want to do is put an ordinance together if you want a different body or a different person to be in charge.
And that's what we were asking for by forming an ad hoc committee. And, and, and that said in here, um, an ad hoc committee to develop a water rate inca- increased guides, processes, and limitations to protect the citizens of Finley. And I would hope everybody in this room is on that same page.
Mr. Bowman.
I, I will defer to the mayor, I will follow. Mayor Mern.
I was just going to reiterate that, again, the Water and Sewer Committee already has that on their agenda for twenty twenty-four to work through. And I would say that, um, the best interest of the City of Finley is to have a water fund that has operational funds to maintain safe, clean drinking water, which is a core service. And it is our responsibility to vet those numbers, to go through it and propose it, and show it, and share it with council. They have done that, and now we will fix the errors of the past to fix that. So I think for tonight, Councilwoman, we hear you loud and clear, you disagree with it. What I'm saying, when we say fix the errors, we cannot, we haven't stated at this point in time, the water rates. Moving forward, if you pass legislation, they will take effect at that date and time, and that can dictate who we want to determine the water rates. If you designate it to somebody else, such as, I'm going to, for ease of purposes, say Water and Sewer Committee, and they change the rates, it is not a retroactive rate implementation. So they can change the rate, they can decrease it back down to this amount, amount, but we're not going to be able to go back and credit people back that amount unless you say, okay, now we're going to do a rebate structure, which, again, looking at the finances of the water fund is not prudent. It would not be possible, you do not have the funds in the water fund.
Mr. Bowman. The mayor, uh, doesn't need to be comment from the audience. This is a city council meeting for discussion amongst city council members. And I would ask you to refrain from, uh, comment, thank you, Mr. Bowman.
The mayor, uh, said more eloquently, uh, much of what I was planning to say, so I'm good.
Thank you.
Ms. Frishy.
So, going, so first of all, I think, Mayor, inferring that our water fund is not healthy and that we are not maintaining our system is just not true. We are always improving our water and sewer projects throughout the entire year. We are upgrading things in our system, we are always doing things, number one. Number two, the sky is not falling tomorrow if you don't have your fifty percent water rate increase. Number three, going back in history, um, from eleven or twelve years ago when water rates were increased, we had a Safety Service Director that validated the reasoning of why. And that reasoning back then was we lost RCA, Harris, whatever you want to call it. They were one of our number one water users. So we had to figure out how to fill that gap. You, Mayor, stating that you just want to have more cash on hand is not a fifty percent rate increase validation in my book or most citizens' books. So it, I think we need to end this discussion, we need to have the legislation, and if Rob or Dawn are telling Jim and I that we're not using the right verbiage to retroactive and slow things down and get to the right point, then that's what you guys are here to help for, and I'm sure we can get that done working together. So can we get a commitment on that from one or both of you gentlemen?
I just know about the retroactivity, I'm just telling you.
I'm just telling you, sitting down, and I'm telling you, retroactive, and I'm telling you, that's what our goal is, for the best interest of the citizens. I, but sitting here going back and forth, I'm kind of over it.
I think parliamentary procedure would allow for a motion to be made to consider forming a committee to address water rates. I think if you had that committee then formed, you could have an ordinance that formally adopts that committee to handle water rates. That's, that's my position.
So you're saying that two members of council with council's policy and procedures, since we request a legislation that the administration isn't a fan of, that we can't do it unless we send it to a committee and just kick the can down the road? So you don't want to sit down and work through this?
Well, I think having a meeting would be great. You're, you can't, you can't go around procedure to get to where maybe forming a committee would be the thing to do for the city.
I'm not looking at going around procedure, I'm all about procedure gal.
It's just that, the way that your request was formed was to acknowledge that we don't have anybody in authority, and we do.
And I, and that's my opinion and Jim's opinion, but nobody responded to an email, nobody created legislation, and Jim and I followed the process to create that legislation, which then could have had discussion and committee meeting further down the road if it needed to. But, but roadblock took place.
So we have, uh, we have your letter, it has been acknowledged, generally in the past when a, a letter from council requesting legislation, it usually comes in a form, comes in a form of a natural letter that's signed by individuals, it's placed on the agenda, and then it's, and then it, and then it requests the legislation. So the, the legislation has been requested. The next time we would expect to see it would be the first meeting in, uh, or the second meeting in January at our next meeting. Between that time, if there's discussions between, uh, yourself and Mr. Niemeyer and, uh, Mr. Finer and Mr. Rasmussen, that would be great, but for the, for the best of this meeting, uh, the letter has been, the letter's been read, the letter's been received, it has received plenty of comment, uh, letter be filed.
So, Rob, get with me, I guess, since you're not going to give me anything on the record.
Reach out to me, no problem.
A letter from Council President Harrington regarding tax incentive review council, known as TRP. This does not require, appointment, this does not require council confirmation.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
A letter from President of Council Harrington, as well as President Pro Tem Russell, regarding appointment to the local Board of Tax Review, this does require council confirmation.
Mr. Wolfser.
Make a motion that, uh, Mr. Sadowski's confirmation be approved for the local Board of Tax Review.
Second, Mr. Bowman, questions or comments? All in favor of approving, uh, this appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, same sign, Mr. Sadowski is appointed. Community reports.
Well, we have an add-on letter.
Oh, sorry, add-on letter, I'm confusing.
No problem. From the Community Foundation Chief Community Engagement Officer Kimberly Bash regarding, um, their grant for Escape for All.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed. Now, the community report, or community reports.
The ad hoc committee met on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three to continue discussions on twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Council rules of procedure, we recommend adoption of rules as circulated.
Questions or comments, Mr. Wolfser?
Make a motion to approve the committee report.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Questions or comments on the, uh, on the motion? So approving, in essence, approving a committee report approves the, um, uh, the, the council's rules for, uh, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year. Make one note, um, in the, in the next one concerning committee assignments, the ad hoc committee thought it best to increase the number of, uh, members on the standing committee, uh, the Water and Sewer Standing Committee to, uh, to five members from the current three members. Doing so would require a change to, uh, Doing so would require a change to, uh, section five committees, paragraph B, standing committees, sub-paragraph four, Water and Sewer. And, and so that, uh, and we, we, I'll admit, we missed it in the, in the ad hoc committee. But, uh, I'd, uh, I'd make that, assuming that the ad hoc, the, the, uh, council committee assignments gets, uh, also adopted, that we all, that we will let the, the rules reflect that change. Is that agreeable to you, Jeff?
I would make, amend, amend my emotion, amend my motion to include that, uh, change to council's rules.
Thank you. And the second was from Mr. Palmer. So we have a motion to accept the committee report, which, and a limited motion to accept the committee report has been seconded, uh, a vote in favor, um, adopts those as our rules. All in favor of the committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And we have those, uh, rules adopted. Uh, I will, uh, take the watermark off of it, make the changes, uh, as, uh, as defined and circulate a, uh, copy of the rules, uh, uh, to the members of council and to Denise tomorrow for also posting on the website and get that, get that out there tomorrow morning.
Go ahead and do the second.
Yeah.
Okay. An ad hoc committee met on December 27th, 2023 to continue discussions on 2024, 2025 council committee assignments. We recommend the committee assignments to be as circulated.
Mr. Bowman. I make a motion to accept the committee report. Second, Mr. Palmer. Questions or comments? All in favor of the committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The committee report is adopted. And once again, I'll take the, uh, watermark off of that document, uh, circulate it to, uh, full council and, um, and for, and to Denise. Thank you.
The Appropriations Committee to whom is referred a request to discuss the Sheetz property development project. We recommend that council allow the administration and the engineering department to spend up to $250,000 of previously appropriated funds for the Sheetz Township Road 230 roadway and utility extensions project, project design surveying and geotechnical work prior to the completion of the annexation process.
Ms. Warnicki.
Make a motion to approve the committee report.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Questions or comments? Ms. Fishy.
Um, I have a couple of questions. I don't know who can answer if it's actually maybe a question for Denise. Um, I was not aware of this appropriations meeting on December 28th. I did not get an email and I did not see it published in the Courier. Did it go out to all of council and was it published in the Courier? Are my first two questions, and I have one more after that.
Yes, and I can forward you my sent them and those confirmations.
Sent them to the Courier? Or what are, what are you telling me you sent them?
I have a distribution list of media, so Courier, um, I'm not, I'd have to even find out what the other, uh, fax numbers are. And then I have the confirmation it went through. So I'll get you that as well as the email that I sent to everyone of the meeting notice. It was right when the minutes went out and I'm not sure.
Okay, cuz I did not get it. And then my other question is going to be, um, back in the October meeting, I had asked about the 629 funds and the ODOT dollars and if we were up to date with all of the meetings through the Comp Control Board. Do we have those dollars in yet?
Uh, those funds have not been appropriated to the project. Um, but we do have the agreements that are with those through ODOT and through the 629. It just, it has not been appropriated to the project quite yet. Or I have not appropriated those funds into the project yet.
So they haven't come here?
We, I just have not done the council process of appropriating them to the project. So we have the agreements. We are, you know, in their eyes, we have the money. I just have not done the legislation to make it go into the project.
Ms. Fishy.
I think to help clarify that, we did not get the money per se, their grants. These grants are going to require draws and you can talk about that process if you want, Jeremy. I just, I don't think that's clear from the question being asked.
Yeah, so working with ours office, how we do when we get those, we appropriate that money in. It's not like we get the money and then we spend it from there. There's a draw process we have to go through. So we spend it and then we get reimbursed for that funds upfront. But the, what you guys normally see with ODOT projects and all that kinda stuff where you see I appropriate that in, that's just showing that, that's going into the project, which project it goes to. But once we get those agreements, I don't have to do it right away. I'm, I'm just holding off for construction and all that kinda stuff because the funds that we have in there right now, like what we discussed in the appropriations meeting, um, can cover my design for geotechnical, for pavement design and all that kinda stuff that I need to get done now to make sure we stay on schedule.
Ms. Fishy.
I guess I'm gonna request a pointed clarification from either the Director of Law or the Assistant Director of Law, um, for audit. I just wanna make sure my eyes are dotted and teeth are crossed, something my due diligence. We have a committee report here with members of committee under our old council, which was adjourned and no longer stands. And we have that committee report being reviewed by a new council. So it may be splitting hairs, but I just wanna make sure from the Director of Law's, uh, perspective that, uh, should they move forward and approve this and, uh, those funds be put into voucher for a purchase order, that I have the ability to pay those and you have no concerns.
Mr. Finer.
You shouldn't have to start over. So I think it would continue on. The legislative, the process would continue on. You've got the committee report from prior and now you've got new council looking at it now, and that's okay.
So we're good to go with this?
Yes, I would say. Correct.
And I appreciate that. I'm asking on the record for audit.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? We have a motion to accept the committee report. It has been seconded. All in favor of accepting the committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The committee report is accepted. Legislation.
First reading for Resolution 1, 2024. A resolution authorizing the sale of personal property which is not needed for public use or is obsolete or unfit for the use of, for the use for which it was acquired by internet auction and declared an emergency.
Does this requires only one reading? Look for motion. Mr. Palmer. Move for adoption of Resolution Number 001-2024. Second, Mr. Greeno. Questions or comments? Uh, one from me. Jim, this is just an annual, is this a once a year or once, once a year?
Yes, we used to do real auctions and when we switched the internet, uh, I guess a couple of rules changed and the Director of Law was kind enough to look at that a couple of years ago and we renewed annually ever since. So it's probably been, what, maybe five, six years, Don, I would think.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All in favor of adopting Resolution 1, 2024, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, name.
Ms. Fishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
And Mr. Diarmuid?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. Congratulations, Dan. Your name is now in the minutes for the next meeting. Welcome aboard.
First reading for Resolution 2, 2024. A resolution requesting the county auditor to make ta- tax advances during the year 2024 pursuant to Ohio Revised Code thirty, 321.34.
Mr. Palmer. Move for adoption of Resolution Number 002-2024. Requires three readings. Oh, never mind. I withdraw. Mr. Wolpser.
This, however, does need to be passed tonight. Is this not the one, Jim?
Yeah, Jim. Um, this, this can, this is really, I hope we never get in a situation where we need this. This does not need to be passed tonight.
Thank you.
This is for, if we would end up, uh, in a cash flow or a tight cash flow, it allows me throughout the year or prior to the auditor at the county releasing the monies they collect on our behalf, me saying, hey, I know you've got money in a bank that's ours. Can I get it a little bit early?
So you're good to the middle of the way?
We've got cash.
Okay.
It's good to hear. Thank you.
First reading for Resolution 3, 2024. A resolution authorizing the City of Finley, Ohio to make an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation for an Ohio Airport Improvement Grant for S F Y 2024.
Jeremy, uh, what's, what's the timing on this grant? When does the application due and, uh, when do you, uh, when are you looking for our?
So this application, um, I, I believe, I was trying to find the ordinance number that gave approval last year. But with working with the new project manager for ODOT Aviation, they wanted to go through as a resolution instead as an ordinance. So this is just kind of repeating, just to make sure we have the proper documents that they want. Um, I wouldn't necessarily need it tonight, but before the next meeting, I'll find the other ordinance number and all that kinda information so that we have that. But this is really the same thing that's already been passed. They just want it in a resolution form. So I guess for future, for you guys, the, all the ODOT Aviation, when we have grants, you'll see them as ordn- or, excuse me, resolutions instead of ordinances. And that's just how the new project managers want to see them.
Thank you. Ordinances.
First reading for Ordinance 2024-001. An ordinance to make appropriations and transfers where necessary for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Finley, Ohio during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024 and declared an emergency.
Mr. Wolpser.
Since this is the, uh, ordinance that allows us to run the city, I would make a motion that council's rules be suspended in this motion. This, uh, ordinance will be given its second, third reading.
Second, Mr. Greeno. Questions or comments? May I?
Just one point of clarification in the description at the top. I'm assuming that other expenditures for 2024, not 2020.
Do load it.
Oh, on the agenda?
Yeah, just wanna make sure since that was circulated.
I will correct that.
Nope, I was trying to document that.
Ms. Fishy.
Uh, quickly, yeah, and it's not, it doesn't seem to be in the ordinance I'm looking at. Um, just so council knows, you requested three changes at your budget meeting. Those three changes were inserted into this document for your approval. That included $30,000 for raise the bar, $45 for planning and zoning, and $15,000 for chairs and various things through council.
Seeing as there is no other questions, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2024? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. You've got President Pro Tem credentials building right now. The rest of council is happy about that.
I didn't blow it earlier.
We have a motion to, uh, suspend, uh, council statutory rules and they're just consecrated. All in favor of suspension of our rules, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, name.
Mr. Diarmuid?
Aye.
Ms. Fishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
The rules have been suspended and this ordinance will be given its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2024-001. Ordinance 2024-001.
Mr. Wolpser.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2024, number one.
Second, Mr. Bowman. Questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance 2024-001, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, name.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fishy?
Aye.
Can I say Mr. Diarmuid?
No, aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Diarmuid. I'm gonna kill him. I know you said.
Your ordinance is adopted.
First reading for Ordinance 2024-002. An ordinance appropriating funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Wolpser.
We need to pass this one tonight so that our folks at work at the sewer plant get paid. So with that, I make a motion to suspend council's rules and give, uh, ordinance 2024 to its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Greeno. All those in favor of suspending council statutory rules and giving ordinance 2024-002 its second and third reading, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, name.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmuid?
Aye.
Ms. Fishy?
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Council's statutory rules have been suspended and this ordinance will be given its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2024-002. Ordinance 2024-002.
Mr. Greeno. Uh, move for adoption of ordinance number 2024-002. Second, Mr. Bowman. Questions, questions or comments? All in favor of adoption of ordinance 2024-002, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmuid?
Aye.
Ms. Fishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
The ordinance has been adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2024-003. An ordinance appropriating funds and declared an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2024-004. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency. Add-on ordinance 2020, first reading for ordinance 2024-005. An ordinance appropriating funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Palmer. This is grant money so that a, a free skate, ice skating can be done at the Qube. Therefore, I move that council's rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its second and third reading. Second, Ms. Warnicki. All those in favor of suspending council statutory rules and giving ordinance 2024-005 its second and third reading, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman? Mr. Diarmuid?
Aye.
Ms. Fishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer, I'm sorry.
The council statutory rules have been suspended and this ordinance will be given its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2024-005. Ordinance 2024-005.
Mr. Palmer. Move for adoption, adoption of ordinance number 2024-005. Second, Mr. Bowman. Questions or comments? Certainly thank you to the Community Foundation for sponsoring another free skate night, uh, out at the Qube. Very much appreciated. All those in favor of ordinance 2024-005, please say aye after your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmuid?
Aye.
Ms. Fishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Old business. Ms. Fishy.
Thank you. Didn't expect to go first. As part of my city auditor, uh, sometimes things come to my attention when there's been an omission. Sometimes, uh, uh, those omissions for political reasons are intentional. Sometimes they're accidental. Sometimes they're just omissions. But, um, in regards to the last meeting last year, when council passed the legislation authorizing, uh, not only the acceptance of the properties in the benching area, but more importantly, spending the 1.5 billion dollars to begin architectural work, there has been a significant change that I think you need to be aware of. I did check the records today to make sure at this point in time, there's been no P O's or vouchers entered into your financial system. So in theory, no work should, has processed. But one of the parcels, the county apparently did not have control of. It was parcel number, uh, 580000243250. It's on Clinton Street, is immediately north of the Rainic property that's being worked on. That property went to a forfeistage sale last week, was bought by a private group. And that private group has, has, uh, it's in an LLC now. And, um, I don't know what they intend to do with it. But it may or may not have an impact on your ability to move forward in the manner that you're under the assumption you're going to be able to move forward on. So I wanna make sure you're aware of that. That has been recorded in the county auditor's office. And, uh, I pulled a copy of that courthouse sheet today just to make sure, especially when you clarify that in the P O's. It's that, Mr. Wolpser, I felt this chair of appropriations. I know you championed the consideration at that meeting of, uh, going ahead and forward with spending some of that money, getting this thing going. But I wanted to make sure you were aware of that case, council. Wanted to reconsider that or at least be aware of it before definitely respect.
Ms. Wolpser.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. I appreciate that. I think we're still good to go forward with that. My understanding is that property is indeed in the floodplain. Is that correct?
May I?
Um, it is my understanding, yes. I also was made aware that Tom Ross purchased that property at auction last week. Um, though it's very unfortunate that the county wasn't able property at auction last week. Though it's very unfortunate that the county wasn't able to secure it as they had originally planned and as I was under the impression that they were going to do. However, we will simply be able to work around that property. We're obviously just entering the design process. There will be limited to no development that would be possible on that. But he had the right to purchase it. I think it's unfortunate that, that there wasn't better communication between the county and city so that we could ensure that that moved forward as had originally been discussed. But we will work with it. And I don't think that it impacts our property.
Ms. Frishy?
Are we sure there's no other properties that what, that could end up getting purchased by somebody else? Because you confidently told us that we had control of all the properties. So if that's not true, should we be appropriating, should we be de-appropriating those dollars and taking it back to appropriations to figure out what's going on? I mean, it seems like it's now this and then we have the environmental issue at Rainick and now we have some other minor environmentals that you guys went over just in the last couple of weeks. But you were confident and we trusted that.
Mayor?
So no, I validated with Steve Wilson, the project manager. Unfortunately, with this property, so it was a state forfeited property that then went to the county auditor. I had been informed by the county prosecutors that it was their intention to have that property transferred to the commissioners to be a part of the project. For whatever reason, that did not occur. So I also am obviously very disappointed. I had also been led to believe that the property was secured. As we look at the rest of the area, no, the other properties have been secured or were already in negotiations and have good faith agreements with the properties that are not, have not yet been transferred. So I'm not concerned about any other items. And I would just again reiterate what was shared at the last meeting and at the appropriations meeting, that the environmental issues that were brought up are all going to be addressed as part of the benching project, which is what we should be doing regardless of what we invest into the downtown area. And again, the contract that is being entered into with Strand is an up to contract for work actually provided with an out clause. So as previously stated, regardless, I think we've all agreed that some level of investment needs to be made in this area, given it is in our downtown. It needs to be improved and we need to move forward with the designs to determine those specific elements and work with the public on what specific elements they want to see and what are going to be engineeringly feasible. And so I believe that the money that was appropriated still makes sense for the betterment of our community.
Ms. Frishy?
You, I may have misunderstood what you just said. Are there other properties that are not secured yet or we're still waiting to secure? Whether, when I say we, is that city or county? I, I guess that's just what I just heard, so.
Yep, there is one property that the county is still negotiating on, but it's the Huntington parking lot parcel. So we're just working with them to determine the specific locations. But we have their word that they're going to work with us. It's just determining the terms of the transfer.
Mr. Diarmid?
Is this property north of Clinton Street or south?
The one that was acquired by Mr. Ross?
Yes.
It's south of Clinton Court. So when you're looking at the downtown recreation area footprint that we've been going from Main Street to the east to the railroad tracks, and then from Clinton Court down where the, kind of the park, the park path entrance occurs, I think it's either the first or second property in from that. So we would be able to butt up against the kind of parking improvements along the roadway, but it wouldn't cause any significant issues.
Mr. Hellman?
Mayor, for me, how, how large is that? Is this like a residential lot, small lot, thirty, thirty feet wide?
Yeah, fifty, I believe it's forty to fifty feet wide and about a hundred and fifty feet deep. So not a significant place when you're looking at nineteen acres of property.
I understand. And are you confident that we'll be successful in getting that piece of property? Or do we have to go through eminent domain or?
With, from Mr. Ross?
Yes.
I, I don't intend to negotiate with him to get that property. We'll do our project around that.
What about an eminent domain?
That would, I don't think that unless that it provide, it's my understanding that that parcel will not provide any significant modification to the flood benefit that we would receive from the benching, and therefore I wouldn't recommend moving forward with eminent domain. Additionally, I think that that is probably part of, that would cause significant delays in the project both from a flood mitigation standpoint and any potential work we would want to do that. So I don't think that that would be in the best interest of the community.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Calhoun?
I was just going to add, from, you know, from a design standpoint on that, you know, if you would envision, that would almost be like on the phase one where that kind of, it moves in and out of where our property was and stuff like that. It's going to change how the hydraulics go through there, but I mean, not to say anything about engineers. That's why you have engineers to design that kind of stuff there. It's just going to change how flow goes through there. They might have to change the slope or something like that on it, but they'll just have to look at the hydraulics. But it, it will be something that can be designed around.
We have all the confidence in you.
I'm glad I'm not doing the hydraulics on that, though.
Ms. Frishy?
So is the property on the perimeter or are we, is it surrounded? Is it like, here's the end of where we're doing our project and it's, it's an outside parcel? There's nothing to the?
No, it's, it's in.
North, southeast and west of it? Or is it?
It's in the footprint. It's not, it's along Clinton Court, though. So again, we can drop things kind of around it. Would be probably what we'll end up doing, but again, we'll just work through the design. But no, it's not necessarily on a roadway. It's, well, here, I'll give you, so here's Main Street, here's Clinton Court, it's kind of like right in here.
So it's not benching, it's just for our design area?
It would have been benched to some degree, because it would be lower just a little bit below road, but it's not anything significant where it's going to create a monumental impact on the hydraulics.
And it doesn't require us to be, we don't have to access that property for anything?
And we would work through the design elements and shift accordingly.
Other old business. Mr. Stajic.
I just wanted to finish up on that with a comment again. I, my thanks to, to council for allowing that to slow down for us to complete the environmental. It was clear at two things at that last meeting. One, there is contamination throughout this area and they intend to not, they won't remove all the contamination and the public shouldn't think that they will. What they're going to do is they're going to remediate down to the level they need to be and there has to be clean dirt two foot down. And I'm sure they're going to do things, or I will hope they're going to do things to make sure that if there's erosion from the waterway or flooding or anything else, that we maintain that two foot buffer for the safety for the public. But I, I think that you folks allowing that process to slow down was key for us to getting to know this because it was clear from Mr. Wilson in that meeting that he already has his specs done and he was ready to move to bid. And now because of that, and if we properly hire the fiduciary that the committee report says we need to hire, that those specs will be adjusted to account for the environmental issues and contaminants that were reported on through this process. So again, I thank you folks who are here and were part of slowing this down, taking the time so we could do a proper due diligence as part of this and now move forward. We'll make sure that we protect the interest of the city as we move forward and I'll, I'll make sure I do my part of that. So again, thank you.
Ms. Frishy?
My question was for, so, so do we need to redo our engineering portion before we start doing our design portion? As far as you were talking about slope and for this?
So I think you're talking about two different projects. So on their, on, on the county or the, on the benching project, they're going to just have to look at their hydraulics, how that looks. And then the park project, it would just, what was on, what was presented to you guys was conceptual of what, you know, was, could be in that area. Mainly where that area was, was a parking lot. So that's an easy thing that you can, you know, widen, move around or anything like this because of this, since this is a floodplain area, it can be developed on anyway. So it's going to be most likely a grass area of some sort or, you know, a green space of some sort within that area. But looking, those are two different projects that you got to look at. One is they got to look at the hydraulics to make sure what they need to accomplish in phase two benching is being accomplished even with that property being there, which can still easily be done. It's just going to have to change how the flows go through there. And then as part of our design process with the downtown park project, that's where, okay, now we know that product's there. How do we, you know, we're going to have to change our conceptional a little bit to make sure that we can, you know, accommodate because that property's there now.
But that's what we've done already is what I was getting at.
No, that's, that's what the, that, that's what the one point five that was approved was, is for engineering to do that work. So no engineering has then been done for that yet. So that's why we need to get those thirty percents because now we know those are the identified areas.
Other old business. Ms. Frishy?
At the la, I think it was the last council meeting, Rob, we had that letter from Columbia Gas. Have you gotten us any more info or details to explain to the public on the rate increase?
Yep. I am Digger John, Columbia Gas Governmental Affairs Associate and may our scheduled for, I believe, the second meeting in January to come and present to council. So, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I was just going to add on that. Again, that's a statewide thing. So that was a notice that went out to all of the users. It was not a Finley-specific notification.
Other old business. Mr. Baumann?
If I may, if you all bear with me for a moment. In light of recent questions regarding my eligibility to hold public office, I thought I would take this opportunity to refer you to the U.S. House of Representatives Ethics Manual, the Holding Local Office section, which can be found on pages two hundred and thirteen and two hundred and fourteen. At times, House employees will, will wish to hold an elected office or appointed local government office. While there is no statutory provision or House rule that absolutely prohibits a House employee from holding public office, local office, while remaining on the House payroll, the applicable provisions of, of local and state law regarding eligibility for office must be consulted. In addition, House employees must take care to avoid any undertaking that is inconsistent with the congressional responsibilities. Further, a staff member considering a leave or serving group in a local office should first consult with his or her employee member on the matter and should refrain from doing so if anyone objects. Because as the manual states, there is no federal statutory provision or House law that approves my service as a member of this body. It would seem to be the deciding factor would be my employer universe classic preference. Given that Congress now administered my first oath of office on the onset of my first term, I can conclude with also my own certainty what his meaning to bear on this topic. Please be also advised that on the first few occasions in which I sought to serve in the State Council, I consulted with the law directory regarding the presence, presence, excuse me, of any applicable state or local laws relating to this issue. If I may, I would again call your attention to the U.S. House, House of Representatives Ethics Manual in, in the Campaign Work by House Employees section, whereby the Hatch Act is specifically referenced on page one hundred and forty-five. Executive branch personnel are subject to resist restrictions on partisan political activity by the Hatch Act. But those restrictions do not apply to congressional employees. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Should you have additional comments or questions, you may direct them to the appropriate government agency. Respectfully submitted, Brian R. Baumann, Council Representative, Fifth Ward.
Thank you, Brian. Other old business. New business. Seeing as old is none. Mayor Mern.
Councilman Wobser, would you like to request an appropriations meeting for next Tuesday?
I would love to request an appropriations committee meeting for next Tuesday. That would be the January ninth. And let's call that for, I believe, four o'clock PM in the third floor conference room unless there's a conflict.
What's the agenda?
Sixty-eight fifteen.
Six, that's right, I'm sorry. The sixty-eight fifteen interchange and the, that renovation of that interchange there. I'm sorry, Jim, did you have an issue? No. Is everybody available at four? Or do we want to go earlier?
So if memory serves me correct, the appropriations committee for this current term is Jeff, Randy, Josh, Holly and Beth. Is that, I believe that's it, so.
I believe you're correct.
Thank you.
We'll keep it scheduled for four o'clock at this point in time. If we look, we need to amend that for whatever reason. We'll go. Thank you.